All ready to go?
Yes.
Ready to go?
Yep.
Staff, you ready? All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the City Council Workshop for August 26, 2025. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, we have two. Gabriel Peralta.
Mr. Peralta.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for allowing us a couple of minutes here today. Again, today, really, the intent of the information about I'm about to provide is really to start transitioning from what our fiscal deadline is to now idle economic injury disaster loans, and those that have a deadline that's extended till next year, April of '26. So for the business community within Kerr County and the contiguous counties, those businesses that were affected economically will still have the opportunity to apply for our low-interest disaster loans, known as idle, for economic injury. And they will have the same limits as our physical damage limits, which is up to $2 million with an interest rate as low as 4% over the course of a 30-year term, and the first year of deferred payments and interest. So that's gonna be economic injury and some that we're getting ready to transition to after the fiscal deadline passes here shortly. Aside from idle, I wanted to share and give you all an update. As of this morning, we've had over 1,600 applications and have offered over $14 million to individuals and businesses throughout the affected communities. So I wanted to share that information along with the idle that will be ongoing. And hopefully, if individuals, again, up until the next couple of days, we're within 10 days now, or businesses that are still interested, we can still help them out either in person, online at sba.gov, or at our 800 number, 1-800-659-2955. So we certainly encourage those that may have been impacted to know that we're still here. We're gonna continue to be here. And we just want you to know that we're readily available and continue to count on the collaboration with the City of Kerrville and anybody else who would like to collaborate and continue to get this information out to those who do need it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gabriel?
Yes?
You will be there Thursday, the end of the hills, I understand?
We will, yes.
For those that could make that. I know from two to three, they're having kind of like a networking thing, but then from three to five years, you'll visit with you and sit down and get some real information. So if you haven't. And the 1,600 applications, was that just the Hill Country area, or what was that?
So the 1,600 is really the whole declaration. And the whole declaration consists of 10 primary counties and 30 contiguous counties. Unfortunately, I don't have a breakdown.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't say it was all Kerr County.
No, no, absolutely, absolutely. And in terms of Thursday, we will be there. And we're actually gonna have some of our customer service staff as well manning one of the tables. And so if anybody is there and would like to sit there and apply with our customer service staff, they can also go ahead and do that there in person also.
Where's this at? The governor's gonna be here, in case you didn't know. Thursday, at End of the Hills, it's called Small Business Gathering, for those that need all kinds of things, so. And also, you said that interest rates as low as 4%?
As low as 4%.
What are the parameters for being able to qualify for the 4% versus higher than that?
Sure. So ultimately, the biggest factor is going to be credit worthiness elsewhere. If you do have some credit worthiness elsewhere, it's possible that you might see slightly above the 4%.
Okay.
If not the 4%, again, we say as low as 4%, up to 30-year terms, but each case will vary, it'll be case-by-case basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Claire Booth.
Ms. Booth. You can use this microphone if it's convenient for you.
I'm here on group boarding homes. I had come earlier this year about the variance in distance between. I was also wondering if there's any way that you could classify the different type of boarding homes, because what I wanna do is for lodging home for retired adults, you know, not for recovering addicts or anything like that. And I'm, right now, I'm not a distance far enough to even try for doing that. I'm at 504 Tyvee, and there's another one just down a block, which is only about 700 feet. So I don't know what your distances are gonna be, but I would like to ask it to be less than 700 feet.
So, we're gonna talk about that in just a minute, so hang around, okay?
I will.
All right. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Thank you. We're gonna delay on item 2A and move directly to 2B. Ms. Hagman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Today, my update, I'm gonna try to focus on more positive things that are going on in the community. Kerr Together is forming very nicely with a comprehensive working groups from every point in the county, from east to west, and covering all aspects of the impacts and recovery that are needed. And so, this is a community-led, long-term recovery team. And as they progress, I look forward to giving you all more updates. So, as Mr. Adrian said from SBA, we encourage individuals and businesses to go visit the disaster recovery centers. The FEMA and SBA deadlines are on Thursday, September 4th, which is next Thursday. So it's important to go to one of these disaster recovery centers at First Baptist Church at 625 Washington Street, or LJ Vineyards, which is 1551 Highway 39 in Hunt. Oh, the Office of the Governor is having a business fair. This was something that the Governor's Office approached Todd and I about the best way to get information to our business owners. So, the Governor will speak. We will have multiple tables, so people can go around and talk to each group. There will be federal, state, and local funding sources there. And so, they will have a federal panel, they will have a state panel, and then there will be some extra time for people to walk around and to talk to each resource. So yes, that will be Thursday, August 28th, 2:00 to 6:00, at End of the Hills. And I believe, right now, I believe the Governor, I think, believe the program is supposed to start at 3:00, and then would end around 5:00, and then allow time at the beginning and the end between 2:00 to 3:00, and then 5:00 to 6:00 for people to go talk to those individual resources. Let's see. Yes.
Just choose your routes carefully, if you drive Thursday. Stay away from End of the Hills area.
I'm gonna encourage people, if you are still looking for information, of how you can either assist, or how you can, or if you are in need of assistance, to go to kerrtogether.com. This is where we are compiling all of our information about various resources. And then, just so that y'all are aware, now that we can start looking to what the next step is, part of that is also looking at the economic impact. And so, we are looking into grants and other types of funding to help us to get a comprehensive understanding of what that economic impact has been, not just for Kerrville, but for Kerr County. But back to my regularly scheduled program. TERS did approve a $50,000 exterior enhancement grant. So this would go to painting, signage, landscape, landscaping, parking lots, things of those manners. We're still solidifying the application process that should open up in October. And we would collect applications through January. And so more information to come next time that I meet with y'all about that. But it is limited at this time just to any businesses within the TERS area, since it is through TERS funding. And that is it. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hagman?
But the audience has one, but they can't unless they've signed up.
Is it okay to ask a question if I don't want to go against procedure?
I'll ask the mayor.
Go ahead.
Just the 50k that's now been handed out. How did they go about getting that to happen if there's no application process?
For the TERS? So we went through and we discussed the application. They had a couple of modifications that we agreed upon, and so that application will go out. But they, yes, they funded the type of grant that was gonna go out.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Kelly, my main judgment, just a real quick update. 625 Washington is no longer open. The disaster recovery center has moved. And we're now at 3785 Memorial Boulevard. That's the Hill Country Youth Event Center.
Oh, okay. Well, there we go. Yeah.
My apologies. So we've moved the disaster recovery center to the new location.
It's moved from First Baptist to the old Agbarn.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A question about the TERS money that you gave out. How did that application?
So they have just allocated the funding. Nothing has been actually given out to any recipients at that time.
They've, the TERS Board has allocated $50,000.
Yes, ma'am.
That has not gone out to anybody yet?
No, no, ma'am. The application will open up in October, and the closing deadline will be mid-January for the application process. And then from there, the applicants will be notified. And then, once you are notified of receiving the grant, and so it's a matching grant up to $5,000. So if you have a project that is $10,000, we could grant up to $5,000.
So that's what that $50,000 is for? It's gonna be given out in $5,000 increments?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on people who match that money?
Yes, ma'am.
Within the zone?
Yes.
Okay. And how will you be putting out the word that the application is available? Or online, or whatever?
Yeah, we'll be doing press releases, putting it online. My goal is to try to email as many of those business owners and get in contact with them personally. I know many people have mentioned that this has been attempted in the past, and, but I'm determined to make sure that it succeeds.
Yeah, and who decides which applications get selected?
We're gonna, we have a small, we're gonna, we're gonna create a small committee of people from the TERS, some outside people and some staff. Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Very good. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next item is sidewalk furniture ordinance update. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. So we've talked to Council in the past about updating the sidewalk cafe ordinance. I'll go through some of the updates. One, this is a Kerrville 2050 action item to ensure that the streetscape plan for downtown accommodates outdoor patio and dining, including the use of right-of-way where feasible. Here's a few examples of existing businesses that have some kind of outdoor furniture, whether it be tables and chairs, or planters, signs, a few display items. So one of the, several of the items that we've had concerns about at the existing ordinance is that it is an annual permit. It's limited to tables and chairs only. It is $50 per table per year. And then there's a site plan or a layout review process before approval. The feedback that we've gotten from both Council and some of the downtown business owners is trying to get to a one-time permit fee. Recommending a $50 permit fee just to go through the process of applying for that permit includes all sidewalk amenities, whether that's planters, signage, display items, or tables and chairs. No site plan required, because we recognize that things change and people move things around. But the requirement will be on the business owner to make sure there is a five-foot ADA clearance path, both from the street to the front door of the business and across the sidewalk, from end to end across the property. So overall, tried to make sure that we simplified the process for the business owner, make sure we've got adequate access for the citizens walking around downtown. Just trying to make this a whole lot more accessible and easy for the business owners. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Is there, is it complaint-based when somebody has material or furniture within that five-foot?
Yes.
Distance? So there's not anybody that, there's no guarantee that people won't put their stuff within that five-foot restricted area? It's just gonna be based on complaints as to whether or not they are, what are they, reprimanded? Are they cited? What happens if they go outside their perimeter?
It'll be primarily complaint-based. Obviously, downtown is very close to City Hall and Development Services, code enforcement. Staff are in and around the area, so if we see anything, we'll take that to code enforcement. As far as citations or notices, similar to our current process, the owner would be notified that there's an issue with their sidewalk furniture. They're given a certain timeframe to correct that issue. If it's a repeat offense, then they would be given citations.
And the permit fee is, is it fifty? Think up a little bit, Drew.
Yes, sorry.
The people over here, I think.
I can't hear you at all.
Is it $50 per year for the permit fee, or just a one-time? It says one-time permit, and then it also says a $50 permit fee.
So the intention would be a one-time permit fee for the life of the business or that owner. If it transfers owners, they'd have to get a new permit.
Okay.
If they close and a new business comes, they'd have to get a new permit.
Okay.
But to really simplify it, since, once a business is open, as you know, there's not often a lot of changes.
Yeah.
Just day-to-day, how they're arranging that furniture would be within the scope of that. So it's not an annual recurring fee.
All right. What if they've already paid something? Now, they're currently, already have their furniture out. They've been in business a while there. They're the same owner. Would they be grandfathered in?
We can take a look at that and possibly issue a new permit under the new ordinance for those that already have a permit. Some of the examples here do not have permits. And I'm not picking on anyone, but like I said, based on the current ordinance, it's tables and chairs only. Turtle Creek has those two planters out front. Those would require the permit now, just so that we can ensure accessibility. But they don't currently have a permit. Francisco's does have a permit, and we could look at rolling that existing permit into this new permit process.
Right. Any other comments before we open up the public? Have everybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Surprised.
I am too.
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Paxton, is there a limit on how much stuff they can have in front of their storefront?
As long as they're maintaining that five-foot clearance, there would not be a limit.
Thank you.
The other thing about the festival in October, which, you know, we're gonna have streets closed, that, that's just, there will be no additional requirements.
No, that, that would be the event permit, the block party to close the street. That's, yes, much, much different process for that.
Okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
I have that, by the way. I have that permit.
Five feet in front of our shop, leaving our plants?
That's, that's a great question, because I was gonna ask that, too.
So, from the front of the business to the side, or to the curb, you can have any of the different amenities that you choose, but you must keep a five-foot clearance path for the sidewalk, both from the street to the door and across the property. So I'll use, the top right is Ferry Moon as an example. They've got some display items at the front of the building, and they also have the table and chairs you see underneath the edge of the canopy. They've got both close to the curb and close to the building, but there is a five-foot clear path between those items.
Any other Council comments, questions? We're not gonna actually vote tonight on, during the workshop. We don't work during a workshop. But David, did you have something to say? And say it to the next.
David Jones, number two, Adaloff Trail. Is the city gonna take any action steps of any other plants or trees or anything else on any of the sidewalks?
Talking about the street trees?
Yes.
Not included in this, no. This is just for the business owners to have things in the right-of-way.
What about Clay Street? Original cuts, you know, urban trail? Anything on that reach?
That would be included in this area.
Yeah, I understand. But the city's not gonna do anything else on, at this point in time, on amplifying or continuing to develop Clay Street and the urban trails?
We don't have any plans tied to this specifically, no. Very well.
Any other people wanna speak to this issue? I'm a downtown business owner. We don't actually have a lot of stuff in front of our shop, but this seems better. Is that the consensus of everybody here?
We, we clean up all the dog food and pour different wells, because there's a lot of people that walk their dogs downtown. And because I had two, three dogs, I'd make sure everything was cleaned. And I still do that every day.
Okay. Does this ordinance look better to you than the old ordinance?
This is much better.
Good.
Yeah, the old one was really scary.
Okay. Go ahead, Bill, right to the microphone.
Bill, right through 705 Water Street. Sort of off the subject, first of all, I think this is really good. I think this is really a help to downtown. There is a tree in front of 707 Water Street that is dead.
Why don't we bring that up at another time?
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on this item, guys? We're gonna move on to 2D. Mr. Paxton.
Good afternoon again. Another ordinance update, just to recap. We've talked about this earlier this year. We had some questions come up about our boarding home ordinance. And as Ms. Booth mentioned, we had a couple of variances also come before the Council. So some of the changes that we're proposing, the current ordinance has a one-half mile separation required between different boarding homes. And another issue that was brought up is the current ordinance does not acknowledge the state-accredited recovery homes. This is a new addition in the state code. I believe in the last two or three sessions, the state introduced an accreditation program for, specifically for recovery homes. A lot of the, I'll say, medical, home health, homes that are licensed by the state are exempt from our ordinance, because they're already under a state license. So we're recommending that we acknowledge that recovery accreditation in a similar way. So they would be exempt from many of the rules, the separation, the inspections for those state-accredited homes. Currently, we have one group home or boarding home that is either accredited or still seeking accreditation. So that home would then no longer require a local inspection, because the state has an inspection process for that accreditation. We are proposing a reduction in the separation required, again, including the accredited recovery homes, clarifying that there is an application and a permit fee. It is not just a permit fee. And then, remove some unnecessary application requirements that we no longer need. And as far as the separation, I wanted to bring this map forward to you. It's a little difficult to read, so I'll walk you through it. As you can see, the properties highlighted that have a current boarding home. The green outline is a 1,000-foot buffer. So the next adjacent home cannot be within the buffer of the adjacent home. The buffers can overlap, but the property can't actually be within it. The blue is a 500-foot separation. And so the reason I wanted to point the two of these out, one, we wanted to reduce it from a half-mile, because most of these, well, all of these are grandfathered prior to establishing that half-mile separation requirement, because none of these meet the half-mile separation from one another. If we move down to 1,000, you can see a handful of them would then be compliant. They're still grandfathered either way, but that would bring them into compliance. If we moved it down to a 500-foot separation, they would actually all be within compliance of the ordinance. As it currently stands, we don't have any standing complaints about any of the existing homes. So we feel that 500-foot or 1,000-foot would be an adequate buffer to decrease the potential for negative impacts on neighborhoods. The primary complaints that we get usually are either noise, and that's just gonna be a management issue, or the traffic, because you do have quite a few people living in one home, going to, coming to and from jobs, to and from visiting other folks. It can generate a lot more traffic than your typical single-family home. And so that's the reason, one of the reasons we have a separation requirement. But with all of these being 500 to 1,000 feet apart, we are not getting any complaints, and we haven't had any in a couple of years, actually. So our current boarding home operators are obviously managing their clients well, making sure they're not creating noise complaints for the neighbors, no traffic complaints. So the draft that we have coming up at a couple Council meetings, wanted to talk to Council to see if you prefer a 500-foot buffer or a 1,000-foot buffer.
Is there a way you can shrink that map to see how many there are in the county?
I can get that map to you. I can't here. And then here's, I tried to do side-by-side, so you could see them separate. On the bottom, you see the 500-foot buffer. Those would all be in compliance. There are a few more that are out on the edges of town that are compliant with the, both the half-mile and either of these two options. But, oh, you can see the two separated.
Okay, but the buffer zone overlaps, but there's still 500 people.
That's correct.
Ms. Booth, could you see that map?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you notice the 500-foot?
I would not qualify.
But at 500...
At 500, you might.
No, they said last time it was 700.
Yes. If we move to a 500-foot buffer, you would qualify.
So you're gonna come back to us with a proposed ordinance?
Correct.
What you're trying to find out today is if there's consensus for 500 or 1,000. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we have this kind of concentration, and we're not getting complaints?
Correct.
I think the 500 would be fine with me. Guys?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Good. We'll bring a draft to you soon.
Maybe we'll see you again soon. Of course.
Thank you.
I'll have to come back.
Gotta keep your eye on us, actually. All right. We're gonna move on to 2E. Water Works and Wastewater System Update. Mr. Barrett.
Actually, I'll be presenting. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So we're gonna circle back to Chapter 110, just as a refresher. We went over this a couple months back, but next month, you'll see a first reading come up for approval on some of these updates and revisions. So 110 covers utilities. Real quick, Articles 1 through 6, that's sort of what they cover. Number 1's in general, there's no changes there. 2, several changes proposed, just for clarification. And Article 3 was the water management plan, but now we're gonna switch that over to water wells. That'll just cover water wells only. And on that one as well, minor changes. And Article 4 is now gonna cover reclaimed water. And there isn't any significant changes in that one either, but we'll cover these in some slides here coming up. So Article 5, that one was eliminated for natural gas pipelines, and it's now gonna cover the water management plan. That one has several changes. That one has several changes. And nothing to six, which pertains to utility liens. So, article two, sections 31, 32, 34 through 53, just some minor changes again. 11033, that's gonna cover the water main extension charges inside city limits. We're gonna remove this section because it's covered under chapter 82 of the subdivision code. And also, we're gonna replace the language indicating that a developer shall design and install a new water and sewer systems per our standards and specifications, and that's gonna be at their expense. And again, we're gonna reference subdivision code 82. All right, some of the additions we're gonna add is the water availability study. So the developer shall submit a water study showing how much water their property will provide, and the number of homes considered will be based on this study. We'll check with our attorney and make sure that Senate Bill 2440 and the existing TAC 230 provide some support for that. So on this section here, if a developer wants to bring in a piece of property, and based on their footprint and what the groundwater district will allow, if that footprint allows for 100 homes, we'll have a conversation if that developer wants to bring 500 homes. So that's kind of what we're looking for on that study. Dan, if you have any questions, I go along, please ask. All right, we'll go to article three, the water wells. So that's gonna cover licensing and regulation of water wells. And again, we're just adding clarification to some definitions and requirements. I'm sorry, 55 and 56, also minor changes. One of the additions here is the water well drilling restrictions, which is gonna have a new section, which limits the drilling of new wells. But there's gonna be an exception on there to where, in case it's impractical to connect to our water system, or if it poses a threat, we'll take those into consideration. Or make sure it does not pose a threat to our, to our system. Examples, if there's one of our existing wells adjacent to this property, we'll have to evaluate that and make sure that it doesn't pose a threat. All right, this one here, there's not much on this one, it pertains to reclaimed water. The uses of reclaimed water, the rates, contracts, the user requirements as per state law. We are the provider of that reclaimed water, but the end user is ultimately responsible for proper usage of that reclaimed water per, I believe it's 210, state regs.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
This will not set the rates, this will explain how the rates are set, correct?
Correct. And all the rates in any of these, we're just gonna refer to the fee schedule. I think the current, there's a lot of fees in it that we wanna remove, just for clarity, and just refer to the adopted fee schedule annually. All right, so moving on to article five, the water management plan. This will have several changes, 91 and 92 revising, clarifying definitions again, and then adding new language that enhances the purpose of our management plan, and water management plan and our long-range water plans. And that purpose statement's gonna cover some of these bullet points here, which is gonna cover conservation, best practices and strategies, efficiencies, sustainability, and enforcement. And again, water conservation is a leading strategy in our long-range water plan. Other cities nearby have adopted similar ordinances and best practices as well. On section 11093, I left that year-round, but we wanna go away from that and more just change it to more sustainable water conservation measures. It's gonna be year-round regardless of whatever stage we're in. We're gonna have these best practices on here to try and promote. And they include implementing heritage landscaping for new development. Pretty much limits turf grasses or other water-dependent species, trying to go towards drought-tolerant species. And we have new development, but maybe in the future we can come up with some programs to where existing property owners that wanna convert their landscape, we may have some initiatives in the future. And we can piggyback off one of those grant fundings for landscape. Also restrict new development to either having no irrigation systems or very minimal. And then we wanna introduce functional and non-functional areas and add allowed uses during certain stages. Functional areas, playgrounds, areas around your dwelling. But non-functional is islands that are out in a parking lot, commercial businesses, it's not considered non-functional. They may not need watering during certain stages, so we wanna introduce that, these two terms, and define them clearly. All right, continuing on this one here, 11094, it's year-round prohibited uses of water. We're gonna look at renaming that more of a sustainable water conservation measures and make sure we cover a lot of prohibited uses on there, and they include restricted hours, days, water running more than 10 feet away from intended area, mainly water wasting. That can cover a lot of, you know, things that are happening that refer to water wasting, so wanna make sure that those things are covered. So this is our current, I guess, conservation stages, as we have them outlined right now. We're not gonna propose any changes next month, but this is how they, you know, how they line up right now. We feel like we can manage that right, and then make some progress through the other initiatives that we mentioned earlier.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
Stage two, which is what we're in right now, I'm wondering, and I've asked the city manager this question too, just out of curiosity, why we don't have allowable times either later at night versus all from 6 to 9, when your water pressure will go down because of that, that's when people are using it. But to water grass, you typically wanna do it at night and earlier hours, just because of evaporation and everything. So I was just wondering how we came up with the 6 to 9, and is there a reason to think about?
These have been in place for several years, I'm not too sure why the calculations were there.
I see that, but I guess, that's dark enough. I mean, I'm just thinking about in the heat of the day, you know, in the morning hours, that's not when I water my garden.
Stuart will help out with that question.
Like David said, these have been in place for about 20 years now, and so originally, we set them up during times when people weren't going to be able to water their grass, so we needed it during waking hours.
Timers, yeah.
Right. And then also, we needed time in the middle of the night to fill our tanks. And so we, there was a two-pronged approach as to why we came up with this strategy, and that's where we landed.
That's a good answer, thank you very much.
That was before David's time, so.
Thank you.
All right, so our existing stages, those are our stages, we manage them. We enter into different stages accordingly, based on our safe operating capacities or any other declarations that may come about, just like we had one recently. But it does fall in place with the headwaters conservation district. So this little matrix here sort of outlines how our stages will fall and coincide with theirs. So 11098 is changing and notice of safe operating capacity. And we wanna add this water conservation guidance document. Again, it's just a guidance document. Again, we manage our own, our own water stages based on our current assessment of our system. And their guidance document, it includes various environmental conditions, the lake level, groundwater levels. They take an average, I believe, for monitoring wells, and they establish that level, as well as the river flow. So also adding this as a requirement to post the water district strat information on any kind of press releases, notifications, as we change into different stages, just to give them a quick snapshot of what their current conservation stages are in. And again, it's just a reference guidance to assist with stages that coincide with the water district.
Oh, I got a question. So, you're saying our stages coincide with their stages?
Yes, the way our stages are set right now.
We're two and they're three now.
Based off the safe operating capacities. We can always change ours.
So we're not coinciding with theirs. I'm not sure I understand the terminology, meaning we're coinciding with them. But we're not, we're not trying to be their stage.
No. No, we're not trying to be in their stage, but it, I guess when all things are equal, our system's running at our safe operating capacity, it lines up with theirs. But ours can fluctuate, though, our safe operating capacity.
Right, so anyway, we don't follow their stages.
We don't. So again, updating this chapter, it's just an approach to water stewardship and compliance with regulatory authorities and different plans around local, regional, and state plans. And it relates to the 2050 Comp Plan Action Item, which is to implement a strong water conservation plan to include additional conservation measures and programs. And this time, we have our team here if there's any additional questions.
How is our pond office Spur 100 doing?
Doing well.
How deep is it? I went on a water ski maybe one day, and I was just curious.
What's the depth of?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The depth of our pond.
It's just a trivia question, and I was around when we voted on having that pond, and so I'm fond of that pond. I need 2 million gallons, I think, not 96. But I just was curious how it's doing. I mean, ASR wells sure came in handy after this tragedy, and so I just think the pond's also one of those wonderful things, we bit the bullet, and we did.
Yeah, we have a very resilient system, so we're able to switch over to our groundwater and then, you know, also having that reused pond and provide that reused water, it does help during these types of events, so.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we're gonna go back up to two A.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you very much.
Hornet?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for accommodating that. The reason I, late is because I was at a long, what was it called? Long-range, long-term recovery group for resiliency along the river. And so, it's kind of in line with a lot of this discussion, because as we're talking about debris removal, we're talking about what's happening to the river and how it's affected by the sheer amount of debris that is being removed. So this is a shot I took today from the pavilion. And if you were here last year taking this same shot, you didn't be able to see any of that, any of those buildings on the other side of the river, right? This is also post-debris removal. So all of the debris that was to be removed at Louise Hayes Park in this section has all been removed. That which is in this photo is there to stay. Those are beautiful trees in a way that, you know, only a mother can love sometimes, because they're bent over, but they are there. And I'm thankful that they're there. Here's kind of the same shot, but just from, just above the dam, right? So those trees are, while they don't look fantastic, those things are, they have a chance to make it. In most cases, they will make it, right? And they're just gonna look a little bent, a little funky. But we were adamant about doing everything we could to save every tree that was possibly there to be saved. And so I can say that the debris team that's out there doing the work was, they questioned some of those trees. They looked and they said, "You really wanna keep that? We sure do." Some arborists said, "We wanna keep it," and so we wanna keep it. And they did everything they could to work around all those trees that were marked in blue. So I was driving around today, just, you know, if you haven't had a chance to be down there, there's a little section down by the edge of the water where that concrete has been pulled back down there. So it's minimal damage, but there is some down there. So, as always, kind of the most important function that's happening right now is the search and rescue, right? So search and recovery at this point. And it hasn't changed, still those two missing persons that they're looking for. And so search and recovery is actively working on areas in Ingram Lake, they're working on areas in Nimitz Lake. They're with all the debris teams as they're removing debris. There's a search and rescue group that is out there with them, along with the monitors, that's ensuring that everything has been looked over. It's been checked and rechecked and rechecked and rechecked any number of times. And so that continues until this final time, when that debris is picked up, placed into the haulers, and taken to those final disposition sites. So we're still working with search and rescue, they've been at the EOC this entire time. They'll be here until, I don't think they're gonna leave until they find those two people. One of the things that Jay and I often get asked, and I think all of you get asked, is, well, what are you gonna do with all the trees, right? And so here's just a shot of some of the trees that the contractors had set aside for us, for you all, for a determination in the future of what to do with those as some type of memorial or something, right? We can't keep every one of those trees. We have no way to process all that. And a lot, most of those trees are chock-full of debris as well. And so a select handful, those are pretty big, pretty big sections. So we've done this at Louise Hayes Park, we've done it at Kerrville Shriner Park, and so those things will be set aside for some determination in the future. How much debris have we gotten so far? So 550,000 cubic yards of debris. I think Stuart Cunius had put out a flyer that it was 32 football fields worth of debris that stacked six feet high. And that was probably about 50,000 cubic yards ago, so you could probably say it's 40 football fields. It starts to become immeasurable, you can't really, it's hard to wrap, I can't wrap my head around it all. But as I was out at the soccer fields today at 5:34, you can definitely see it because what was kind of sparse before, where there was a little pile here, a little pile there, it's everywhere. So if you've had, if you've gone down to the dump to go dump off something, you've driven past it recently, it is Grand Central Station. There are trucks coming and coming and going and go, just so much. It's, it is like they're turning it around and turning it around and turning it around. I will also say that I like, safety's a big thing for me, I always get on staff about it. So I got out of my truck, I had no vest, I had no hat, and within 30 seconds, somebody from the debris team pulled up, said, "Where's your hat, where's your vest, what are you doing here?" So they're doing a very good job at keeping it safe. So while it is busy, it is very safe. This is a shot from the G Street Bridge today, so as you can see, or maybe you can't see, they're putting that debris into those big haulers, that dark truck in the center of it, that is a search and rescue vehicle, that's there. So they're with those haulers in specific sections of town. Now, some of this, it's already been checked, and it's not an issue, but some of the areas like G Street where there's a huge amount of debris, you'll see a more targeted effort with those search and rescue folks, along with the debris teams, making sure they're carefully looking at it.
Is that why I noticed today on 173, where the church property is, there was an ambulance over there along with a truck that looked like similar to that, is that, is that what they're doing? Because I know they're pulling all the stuff out of the river over in that area and staging it on the church property.
So they'll stage an ambulance out there? Yes, I think so, yeah.
Not that they found.
Not that they found anything, but they staged it just in, it's kind of their process.
I have a question. Silly one maybe, but I've noticed that these green things, this piece of equipment, is getting the debris and taking it to a pile. Why wouldn't they just put it in the truck? Is the truck not able to actually be there when they're picking it up?
Well, a lot of times, it's because they're front-loading that, so they are, they are getting an area ready for multiple trucks to be there, so they would, you know, take...
It's the way this space is.
Disparate piles and make them into one big pile, so then they could just, they can just blow and go really fast. It's kind of just sort of...
Got it, okay.
Methods and means.
I don't do this for a living, so, you know.
Well, some of the debris piles have to be searched, though.
Well, that's true.
Some of the debris piles have to be, they need to dry before they can be searched, so.
And I think they still try to separate some of those piles out as well, right? So construction debris... So construction debris from vegetative debris. Those are just a shot of part of that field out there. Tex dot's mostly done. The stuff that was in Tex dot's right-of-way is mostly finished. Their trucks have gone by and they collect very minimal amounts. And so what they've all agreed to is that the contractors that are working for T-DAM, if any of that stuff gets placed out on Tex dot right-of-way, then one of those two contractors will come pick it up as opposed to Tex dot continuing to have a third operator just not really picking up much stuff. So again, about five hundred and fifty, five hundred and sixty thousand cubic yards of debris, and that ramps up by about thirty or forty thousand, fifty thousand cubic yards per day. Yeah, they're averaging between fifteen and thirty, depending on where they're at.
Is that just Kerrville, or is that also the one that's on Stone Lee?
That's all of it. That's both, both sites.
Yeah, that site on Stone Lee is incredible.
It is. It's Center Point. I was by there the other day and it was like, wow.
Yeah, and it's a lot taller than six feet.
Well, so is the stuff on one-seventy-three that they're staging.
Yeah, it's thirty feet high, you know, I mean, it's massive, right? So this is just a snapshot of what those arborists did. This is an internal GIS we have. They marked over two thousand trees just within our park systems, right? What types of trees they were, the diameter, breast height, the conditions of the trees, everything. And they went for weeks, kind of going from the north side of town all the way through to KSP, and they did the county parks as well. And it was, I'm really thankful for those teams that did that because it made it a whole lot easier for us to tell, you know, the contractors, here's a very clear delineation. Take it, don't take it. Last time we talked about this, they are looking for monitors to help with the debris. It's a position that's available. So you go out there, you watch the debris guys put the stuff in, and then you watch them drop it off. And it's kind of long days, but, you know, it's not too complicated to work. And so if there's folks out there looking, that's, there's some of that available.
Well, I got a chance to visit with one of them when I was waiting for my tour of the River Trail. And the lady said the biggest challenge they have right now is living quarters.
Is what?
Living quarters for the workers. A lot of them are coming from.
So people are coming in from out of town because they're having a hard time finding folks, yeah. So I mean, if there's people here and they're looking for work, this is not a bad gig for, and it's not, you know, it's going to end. So it's a kind of a good temporary gig. And so the private property debris removal is kind of a big function of what's going on now because once, most of this is going to be private property. So they've had about five hundred and seventy-five rights of entry come through, and they've disposed of or finished probably about seventy-five to a hundred of those at this point, and they're still working through the rest. So there's a lot of private property to be accessed. And for folks who still need to sign up to have private property, to allow contractors to remove that property, remove that debris from your property, you can either go to the Ingram Volunteer Fire Department on the lower field there, Center Point Volunteer Fire Department. And also, there's a third location at LJ Vineyards in Hunt. This giant list was very simplified by T-DAM. They said it was too complicated for people to get all this information, so they require some pretty simple information now. So it's, so it's much easier for folks to get signed up. They don't need to find their insurance documents and all the rest of that. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I think I see what you've been saying every day on the streets, you know. It's, and I do feel like because we are removing the debris, as hard as it is to see them go away, it's making room for the regrowth, and that's making it look a little better, you know? And I've been encouraged just seeing that happen, so. Good job.
I did have one more thing.
I was wondering.
I did. So there's never a good time for this, and excuse me if my face gets flushed, but I don't like talking about this kind of thing. As we continue to recover and support all those who are affected, I did want to take a minute and talk about mental health. So it's, takes its toll on everybody in this room, everybody who works for us, everybody who's been affected by this. A lot of us have been going on adrenaline, and that wears off, right? And that creates its own set of issues. Most everybody who's in public service, police officers, firefighters, utility workers, streets employees, you know, it comes with a territory to kind of keep your composure. Shove it deep down inside, as my father would say sometimes. I've done that. I've been, that's been a problem for me for a lot of years. What I've learned is, and what I want to share, is that carrying that is not a good idea. It's a very bad, bad idea, right? You know, I know staff members who would say, you know, it's just, you're being a baby, you know? Or my brother, really not staff members, but I can hear my brother saying it. Being strong really comes from acknowledging that grief, acknowledging your stress, acknowledging the need for support, right? Saying that you actually need to go talk to somebody. That's, 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 that's a good way of being strong, right? And I get it. I shove that thing way down deep inside. I feel that mantra all day. To the staff, I would like to say that, you know, remember that your well-being is the most important thing for us, right? To the community, it's the same. You know, I have direct control over making some of my staff members do some things, but not a lot. I can only urge them to go talk to somebody, right? I can only urge them to make sure that they don't keep these things inside. And usually, you deal with this in a police setting. Police or a fire setting, right? That's typical, you know? I'm used to that. I can understand that. It's harder to kind of try to unravel that stuff for a parks employee who's just not supposed to deal with these kind of things, right? Not that any of us are ever supposed to deal with any of this, but just allow yourself to be vulnerable, allow yourself to find the grace to go talk to people and be okay with all that. Because I had to go do it. I had to go talk to a therapist, and it was like two hundred pounds worth of weight lifted off my shoulders when I got done talking to him. So it's worth the effort. That's all I have.
I want to add to that. I've also talked with a counselor. It helped me. I didn't lose anyone directly. I lost two friends. We didn't lose any property. But I have friends that don't have a home. And anyone in this room, if you need to talk to someone, talk to someone. I don't care how big and burly you are, how tough you are. Find someone and talk to them. I went to a licensed professional counselor. That worked for me. But if you have a wise friend or someone you can lean on, now's the time. I just want to echo what Mr. Hornis said. It's not bad to ask for help. Ms. Booth.
The first two weeks of this, we offered our B and B to the first responders, to the first responders. I just, they just stayed with us.
Right.
And there was a couple pastors that stayed with us. And before one of them left, he told me, he's been to, I mean, this is what he does all the time, to hurricanes, tornadoes, whatever. He said the only way he could describe what happened here in our area was a biblical event. And he said, and they were here for the mental, you know, to help. And he said, please, he says, anyone you see or talk to, he says, please have them go see somebody. He says, because this is something you've never seen before. So I was so impressed that they were, and like I said, they stayed with us for a couple weeks, different ones. And they were amazing, amazing people. And we couldn't have asked for better people to come and volunteer for our area.
There's a lot of grace. Any other comments? Right. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the city council workshop at five-twenty-nine.